Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is Monday, June 3, 2019. We have an open study session for our corporate fund budget and 115 trust fund. Anybody like to start the conversation?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
All right, so, of course, we received, this is by ordinance establishing the 115 trust fund, and it's, I think it's a 26-page document, so I'm still going through it, because I received it today. But with that being said, I do have questions, and I'm going to say, if it's in here, I appreciate a recap, just because I am going through the document. I think it's a really important subject, because we've been talking about it for a while now, about the importance of doing this correctly with our police and fire retiree system. They are individuals who do such an amazing service to our community, putting their lives on the line and serving the community, and we greatly appreciate everything they do. And I will tell you, you know, standing with them in Lansing, to get things done that is appropriate and needed for them, to protect them, their health, their wellness, and their families, and as a mother of a firefighter, I will tell you, I appreciate their service. With that being said, my question, Mr. Miyaki, my question, because again, I'm going through the document, I think I found, and I can't give you the page number, because I didn't see page numbers on here, but I believe you've covered a lot of my questions, and I think it's section 1.0, no, 1.205, because the healthcare, obviously, and this includes the police prior pay, first pay, fire first pay and prior pay, as well as the life insurance expenses, and expenses for the board, which is administration costs and revenue, these are all items that go into this. You have them separated, and there's oversight by a separate board, correct? The 115 trust fund will have a separate board?
The board is going to be the 345 board. There are two different divisions here. One of them has to do with the City of Dearborn Heights, Act 345 Police and Fire Retiree Healthcare Benefits Trust, and the other one is for general government. The first page is where it starts with regard to the Act 345. The 12th page is the one that starts with the City of Dearborn Heights General Government Retiree Healthcare Benefits Trust. There are two different divisions that are established, the brand-new division, brand-new article, under Chapter 2 of the city code, and so we've separated them out as two different boards. The boards would basically be the same as the general government pension board would also be the general government retiree healthcare trust board. The Act 345 board would be the Act 345 Police and Fire Retiree Healthcare Benefits Trust Board.
Okay.
So essentially, to make sure we don't end up having any problem, Mr. Rashad, who I'd like to thank publicly for his assistance with regard to this, both now and his firm in the past as well, we discussed this, and I think that this is the best way to ensure that there's not going to be any sort of a problem, saying that this is not appropriate under Act 345.
Very good, and I appreciate that, and Attorney Rashad, I did see you here, thank you for being here, for your work, because I know we had conversations several months ago about this piece, and that it is imperative we do it correctly, and avoiding the controversial, you know, between, you know, general fund is here, and a police and fire have to be separate, which means that money cannot be in general fund, it has to be separated, correct? Sir?
If I might ask, isn't it going to be cheaper to have one fund, because we're going to pay two administrative costs, and you can still keep a separate accounting of both in one particular fund? Because I'm concerned about that, I'm also concerned about the state requirements of hitting the threshold, and I think having one fund gets us to that aspect and saves the taxpayers considerable amount of money. It's a long question, but what's your comment?
And if I may, just by way of introduction, would it be verified?
Yeah.
Yes, can you step to the podium up here?
Good evening, for the record, my name is Tom Micho. I have the pleasure of being your legal counsel for both the police and fire, as well as the general retirement system. Just a little bit way of introduction as well, I, in my office, represent over 60 different public pension and healthcare funds in the state of Michigan, so I'm really here just to be able to answer any specific questions that you have as a resource, and make sure that you have the available information that you need to make a decision. Mr. Mayor, to your point in terms of the, you know, the structure that's being proposed, I have had an opportunity to work with Mr. Miyaki on coming up with the document that you have in front of you today, and what has been presented in front, you know, in the packet, is a structure that's similar to the systems that are created in, you know, in other communities that have 345 plans, as well as general employee retirement systems. And what is being proposed is a structure that takes advantage of the economies of scale by replicating, in essence, the structure that you would have in the police and fire pension system, as well as in the general system. It's very common, and it's worked very well, to create a healthcare fund, but also have that administered by the similar board members, trustees, that have worked with both your general system for the general employees, and the public safety for the police and fire. And so it has been very efficient, and has worked very well with specifically other Act 345 communities. So we did contemplate the possibility of having one plan, but because of the various structural issues, it made more sense to design it to have two separate plans. And so from that standpoint, you know, we will and will continue to work with your auditors to make sure that you're in compliance with. The main discussion points as of late have been the requirements for public Act 202, and that recognizes the different thresholds and corrective action plans that many communities similar to yourself are working through currently. And so we are aware of those requirements, and are designing things specifically to promote compliance in the long term, as well as other issues that you're relating to, your specific community.
Well, I certainly defer to your expertise, but I thought I'd raise the question, because there are some advantages to just having one. But I understand that the healthcare and other things are different, so I'd just raise the question.
Absolutely.
I would note also, in terms of how the sense of being accounted for doesn't necessarily, these boards will basically have a lot to do in terms of the decisions that end up being made in terms of the investment. As a matter of fact, they will control whatever the money is that comes in. So it won't be, I mean, they'll have to feel comfortable with how they lay things out, and we, as mainly the city, will not necessarily have control over exactly how that ends up being done. That's the nature. Years ago, there was a big issue about whether or not we should be doing things as a fund or a trust, and there was more of a tendency to believe that we should do things as a fund, at least among the city council. As time has gone on, it appears that in order to make sure that there's not going to end up being a problem in terms of PA 202, it appears that the trust is going to be the superior vehicle for doing this, and therefore, that means that control is very clearly vested in each of the boards. So if they're able to manage things, so to speak, together, or if they're not, that's really going to be a matter of how they do things, how it is presented to the state, in a certain sense, is going to be depend, depend on what their assessment is of how this is supposed to end up being done, as opposed to by either this body or the administration.
Madam Chair, just a real quick comment, and I just want to say thank you, because that was clarification, but I understood that they do need to be separate from general, and that's basically what you're indicating, and I do appreciate that insight. So thank you, because the Act 345 board is an independent board that has oversight of that, with you, of course, as the attorney, and I appreciate that clarity.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions for council members?
I've got a question.
Councilman?
On your opinion, you say it has to be two separate, or it's easier or more efficient to have two separate?
The consideration was that two separate systems was the best for the structure of the plan, with respect to replicating both the police and fire, as well as the general systems, and designating two separate trusts was typical, and in my opinion, the best, the best structure.
But it's not legally, it's not mandated to have two separate, is that what you're saying?
It's not legally.
Okay.
It is legally required to have a trust.
Yeah, right.
If you're going to go through the effort of having a trust, then the 345 and the general, two separate trust funds.
Councilman Abella?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just going to say that originally, the document that was originally proposed actually had them combined, and the difficulty, there are a number of difficulties even with governance and being able to end up dealing with, and that's why we consider this to be the best option, not necessarily the only option, but the best option in terms of making sure things are in compliance with the law.
Thank you. Councilman Abella?
Was there any disadvantages to separating them like this?
Well, the big one, if I might, you had extra costs, because you got the duplication of administration and investment, but the other thing is, we're required under Public Act 202 to be at that 40 percent, and I forget how many years, 20 years, what have you, and there'll be, it may be difficult for the general fund to hit the 40 percent. So from a general fund standpoint, since you don't have the independent millage, I'm just a little fearful that the taxpayer will be further burdened with additional money to come up with to get to that 40 percent.
And this is one where you pay as you go, right?
No, this is prepayment now.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston?
Dearborn has already done this, and are their plans separate, do you know, Mayor?
I do not, but Dearborn did a different thing, which we were not eligible to do, because we have a very good positive rating, but we don't have the rating required in the state law. So what, one of the options that you can do is basically go out and borrow the money, and that's what they did. So they achieved, took care of their liabilities. Now, there's pluses and minuses to that, and the classes that I went to earlier last year, is like in Oakland County, they prefunded a particular group of employees, and then they eliminated that operation. And then what happened is, they now are sitting on about $30 million that they can't use for anything else, because they set up a trust for like, a group of employees. Comparable, I'm not saying we'd ever do this here, but if for some reason we took all the general government employees and contracted them out, and we prefunded this, there isn't anybody there to pay the healthcare. So one of the issues that, for one of the people I know real well that works for Patterson, is that he said, be very careful, that if you prefund it in that fashion, that you're going to have employees that continuously, or put language in, that would allow you to revert it out if the employees were gone. But that's not going to happen in this particular case.
Okay.
But I think I answered your question.
And that language is in here, correct?
Pardon?
That language is in here to revert it back out, if, for some reason?
Oh, there, yes, there's termination of trust language at the end of each one of these sections, and that the money would come back to the city, if there is ever a termination of these trusts.
Okay.
See that, thanks, thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments from council members? At this time, I think we're done. I can, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate you coming tonight. We open it up to public comment. If there is no public comment, is there any public comment? Please step up to the microphone, two minutes, and state your name.
About Act 345, Resolution 11165, motion by councilmember, seconded by councilman Apigian, that the city council concurs with and approve the budget amendment to balance out accounts for year-end as follows. There was $1 million approved for retiree payouts, and $30,000 for prior retiree, then $110,000 in retiree payout. It wasn't shown on the general ledger for December, I believe, 2018. Those numbers showed on October copy, which I foiaed. I would like to know why the difference between those two copies. There was $2.991 million, which was approved by city council. It was supposed to be in the general ledger from year 2011 up to 2018. Anybody can explain why the difference, it wasn't showing on December 2018, it showed on the second copy in February 2019?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We can't respond. Yeah, I'll meet you with the attorney on that tomorrow, on Wednesday anyway.
What's the study session?
Well, you know what, yeah, you're right, we can't respond.
Study session? I can't answer that question, because I don't know if someone...
No, I have it, yeah.
Do you have the answer?
No, I don't have the answer, but I have both copies, and that was something I flagged, and the attorney and I are meeting on it soon, tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Okay, tomorrow, we'll be going over that, because I do have both...
You can say that to Mr. Abdallah.
Yes, but I would like that information, because I know that was from 2011, and I was trying to find the motion, so I could bring that with me, that I understood there was an amendment made, and that would be my question, but I think what Mr. Abdallah's hawk's point is, is that when I requested the ledger's all incoming revenue and all expenses, there was some question marks on funds, and then when our resident here foiaed it, it changed. The ledgers were different, and that one particular transaction was not on the copy that I received, and that was October 2018, where his copy came in, or maybe it was December 2018. It was December, because it's stamped up in the corner on the document. Then yours was in 2019, so there was a difference, and that was one of the items that I flagged. So we will talk about that tomorrow, and I'd love to have a copy if you already have that, because it sounds like you already foiaed it, because I was trying to retrace that, because that, you know, was even before my time. So I was trying to put it all together, because that would, again, that's one piece that wasn't in the original documents that I received from the comptroller, that was added after the fact.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Can we move to close the study session?
Move to close the study session.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Coniston. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Study session is ended. We'll go right into the special meeting, if that's okay with everybody?
Yep.
That way we just get it going. Whoop, we got Mr. Clerk down there.
Want me to do this? What about the budget?
That's what we just discussed, but now we voted in this part, it's right here to me.
Okay.
That was the special. Okay. Good evening, everybody. Tonight, we have a special city council meeting. Mr. Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Dave Abdallah.
Here.
Bill Bazzi.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Denise Melonowski Maxwell.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
Tom Wenzel.
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a call.
Thank you. Tonight, I'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under guide, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Okay, first item on the agenda is our agenda approval.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to approve the Order of Business for June 3, 2019, special meeting at Dearborn Heights City Council with the addition of item 8A.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Bazzi. Is there any discussion?
What is 8A?
9B.
That would be the mayor's letter regarding the...
It's 9B, isn't it?
Yeah, 9B.
Well, I thought it was a, no, is it? Because it's a mayor's report.
I'm sorry, it would be under reports from the mayor, it would be 8A.
Okay, 8A.
Right, right, yes.
Yes, because that is...
So you got to renumber it.
That's a support.
Okay, supported by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is public hearing and comment on agenda items. This is the general public, you have two minutes to comment, state your name, and come up to the podium.
Councilwoman Higginson?
It's on the agenda. Are you commenting on either the corporate fund budget, or the tax levy?
No.
Okay, so then what's on there? Okay, microphone, please.
Again, Zuhair Abdallah, Dearborn Heights. I didn't see the agenda, but I think this related to the budget. I would like to see all the funds which related to the retirees, health insurance, retiree first pay, retiree prior pay, to be in separate accounts monitored by the right pension boards. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? Okay, next item we have on the agenda is reports from the mayor. This is the Spirit 2019 Festival Adult Beverage Supplier Recommendation.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move to approve the letter, and concur with Director Bryant Hadad, on proposals for a proposal to select adult beverage supplier for the Esseers Festival, O&amp;W, Inc., and central distributors, as outlined in 8A.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Bazzi. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazzi?
The reason why I voted no for this at the last meeting is, which also, a lot of residents that I've gotten calls from, the issue that the chief made a comment at the last meeting, and asked the council, so I think a lot of residents probably like to hear from the chief. I was worried about overextending the police from, I know there's a lot of events going on, and some residents were concerned about another event, the Spirit Festival that week. So my concern, should the residents be worried about overextending the police, is the police, will the police be able to cover this event as well?
Yeah, we've had discussions with Director Hadad about providing security for the Spirit Fest. We've implemented plans for the last six, seven years. Every year, we adjust the plans based upon what happened last year, what we're predicting for next year. It is not a drain on the police department. It is not a drain on the police department.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Yeah, this...
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston?
Yeah, and I've received some phone calls from different people. I was concerned, as some of the other council persons were concerned, as Councilman Bazzi mentioned, it is right there on Beach Daily in the neighborhood, but we've had the beer and wine at every festival, and I don't want to see this festival, you know, be any different, it may be the last festival.
Okay, thank you. Any other, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Yes, I do have a question, but I don't know if we can discuss this here. Is this going to change the position with Antonio's as a major sponsor?
I personally had discussions with him, and he was very disappointed at the item, and to the extent that he might have withdrawn, but he assured me personally, I don't think he's here. I told him I didn't think it was necessary, after checking with a couple of council members, and they had indicated they were going to change their votes. So I assured him that there would most likely, depending on tonight's vote, be alcohol as there has been in the past, and that was what he desired. If necessary, he would have showed up, but I, he's busy running all them restaurants, and I appreciate the fact that they've been guaranteeing that we don't have a loss, and I thank them very much.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazzi?
I mean, I'm kind of, that comment that the mayor just made, he called council members to change their votes, and again, my concern was the safety of the residents in the area, and the chief addressed it, so I don't, I don't know why the mayor had to make phone calls with different council members. I want to go on record that I wasn't one of them, so I don't know if that's, that's a normal practice, to call council members to make them change their votes.
You were putting words in my mouth.
I think that's what was said.
No, it wasn't.
I said I called a couple of council members to understand why they had voted at the request of Mr. Rigero.
Okay, well, thank you. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abella?
Just want to reiterate on my end, again, I have no problem with alcohol at any type of festival, just my personal problem with it is just having it at the same time while you have kids running around doing their thing, as far as games and what have you, is concerned. So that's my main problem with it. Otherwise, I have no problem with alcohol at a festival, if it was an adult-only type venue.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilman Wenzel?
My concern is also what Councilman Bazzi had, and I, it relates to the fact that the, our packets, our council, our meeting packets are not delivered by the police force anymore, because it was a burden on them to drop off our packets on their, during their routes around the city. And I always loved to see the police come by my house, and now we're sending out, I don't know how many, X amount of police for four days, and so that was a concern I had, the statement made like that, that they couldn't drop a packet off, but they could supply security for a four-day event.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Any further discussion?
Just here. Yeah, I forward the email from Mr. George, who's Antonio's attorney. I think part of the concern to address Councilwoman Hicks Clayton's question was more how late in the process this ended up coming up. So if there is any sort of desire to address this in the future, it would probably be helpful to address it much sooner, so that Antonio's has some sense of what's going on, and feels like they have input.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? At this time, let's take a vote on it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Councilman Abella is opposed. Next item on the agenda is report from city officials, 115 trust fund. Madam Chair. Councilman Muscat.
I guess Lisa worked on this awfully hard, so I'm going to...
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
I'm going to move...
Thank you, Councilman Muscat. I appreciate that. Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Would move that the city council adopt this ordinance, and because we're declaring it an emergency ordinance, consider it read for the first and second time, and effective upon publication, as outlined, and this item is 9A.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is new business. It is the adoption of the 2019-2020 corporate fund budget.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that city council adopt the 219-220 corporate budget. I went through it, all the changes that were made, were made properly, and I see no reason to hold back on it as, as outlined.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Abella. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
Councilman Wenzel is opposed. Next item on the agenda is adoption of the Act 345 tax levy.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston?
I move that the 7.636 mils be levied to finance the voter-approved Act 345, fire and police plan for the fiscal year 2019-2020, in the amount of $9,459,366.
Second. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton supported it. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. At this point, we have comments from city council members.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Wenzel.
I just want to let it be known that the reason I voted no on the budget was, I'm living up to my word to residents, that I wouldn't approve any budget that didn't contain a five-day work week for the city of Dirbon Heights.
Council Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Muscat.
And to, you know, to piggyback on Councilman Wenzel's, the last meeting, I voiced my opinion on the five-day work week like he did. And the reason why I passed this, this time, was because we had made it perfectly clear that we're going to go for the five-day work week this year. I'm, I'm going to hold that, the administration, to this, okay? So, but we needed to pass a budget, send it to Lansing, let's get this ball out, show on the road, and we can work with the unions and whatever we have to do.
I too agree with Councilman Wenzel and Councilman Muscat. I do think we do need a five-day work week, but we do need to do a little bit more research on it before we move forward with it. But that's something that will be on the agenda real soon.
Yeah. I'm all in favor of five days, absolutely.
Concur. Any other discussion from council table? Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask for public announcements from community, for the community. And I don't think there's anybody here today. Okay, this time, I'm going to open up to public comments from the residents. State your name, address, and you have three minutes, please.
My name is Alham Mackey, and I live on Sicil. I will not give my address because I don't want to be harassed by the members of the mosque. It's the parking again. What are you going to do tomorrow with the Freedom Festival plus the religious holiday tomorrow? If you go on Kenlock right now, they're all set up with their trailers for the festival tomorrow. Where are they going to park? Are they going to park on the streets again? We were harassed for the Night of Power and the Night Great of Power. We were cussed out, harassed. There was a fistfight in front of a home on Dax Tater. They are parking and blocking our driveways. They're parking in front of our homes and leaving trash. We asked the, the chief of police to do something, and he said, well, you know what? The mayor, he told us to be patient with the people for the church, for the mosque. We're residents. We pay your salaries. You're talking about the police officers and their pensions and your budget. We pay the budget. We pay the, the residents. People from outside that don't belong to that mosque members, they don't pay for the city of Dirbon Heights. We're paying over $10,000 in taxes and no support. Help us out. It's no laughing matter. It's gotten to a point where a residence on Dax Tater was threatened. So this is what Dirbon Heights has come to? And it's not just the Muslims. It's a lot of us on, from Dax Tater all the way to Lawrence. Go on Facebook, go on, go on Twitter, see what's going on. So what are you going to do tomorrow? Mayor, what are you going to do tomorrow? What police? We asked the chief of police. He says, well, I can't do anything because I'm under the mayor. Mayor says, well, don't worry about the mosque. You know, let's calm it down. What about your residents? We voted you in. We paid the taxes. What are you going to do tomorrow? Tomorrow's a religious holiday. Tomorrow's the first day of the Freedom Festival. How are you going to protect us? You're talking overtime. Are you going to give overtime for police officers tomorrow? Are you going to protect me that I can go out of my home tomorrow? Tell me what you're going to do. That's all I ask.
There are going to be times that there's going to be very large crowds at the particular mosque. We have given alternative parking spots. Unfortunately, they're not always being utilized. We are continuing having dialogue, and hopefully, we're going to be able to accommodate everybody.
Okay, so you've got in dialogue with them for two years now, right? Every other church has buses. Put them at the Canfield Center. Shuttle them to the mosque. They don't want to do it. What are you going to do? So to get with the mosque isn't working. To get with your residents, we're frustrated. So how long is it going to last? A year? Two years? I can't go down Sicil on a Friday or on a holy day because I'm jammed.
Okay, ma'am. So if there's an emergency, what are you going to do? Ma'am. Councilman Abdallah would like to comment on that, if you would allow him?
So I've had conversations with that particular mosque.
Ma'am, you're a member. This face, he's a member, and he's on their board. So go on.
I was just about to say, for full disclosure, I'm a member of that mosque. I'm also on the board of directors of that mosque. And I'm honored to be there.
I didn't say anything about the mosque, but, but...
So, so, no, I'm just...
You're not being, you're not being...
So again, if you'd allow me to, I've asked multiple times, okay, and now I'm not speaking as a council, as a councilman. I've asked multiple times. I said, get a committee together. I spoke with you. I spoke with all the young lady. I said, get a committee together, four, five, six people.
We have it.
And I said, and I gave you my phone number.
Correct.
And I said, give me a call. I've already spoken with some of the board members. I've already spoken with the imam there. And I said, every one of them is more than willing to sit down and try to find some sort of resolution for this particular thing. This is an issue. This is somewhat of a problem, obviously, during holidays. Tomorrow happens to be one of them. Just like at any church, during Christmas Eve, it's probably going to get a little bit busy. Unfortunately, we don't have the luxury of having as much parking as maybe the Silverdome or Ford Field. That unfortunately is not there. Certain days, there's going to be more people coming in because it's a holiday than what is normal. Now, one of the numbers that was thrown out last time was 5,000 people there. There is not no 5,000 people there. The maximum that can be in there is about 1,500, maybe 1,600. Number two, everything was gone through the books, and everything was okayed. So it's not somebody's doing any type of cheating or anything along the lines of that. The number of people that were acting like idiots, I was, I said it last meeting, and I will say it again. If somebody's acting like an idiot, I'm telling the chief right now, if somebody's acting like an idiot and, and walking around swearing at people, which I have a very difficult time believing, that everybody walking out of that mosque acts like that.
No, not everyone. We never said everyone.
So it's probably a select few. Well, but that's where it was made out, that's where it was made out to be.
Okay, point of order here.
So there's probably a couple, two, three, four, five, maybe even 10 idiots. I don't know. I'm the first to tell the chief, it is absolutely okay, at least by me personally, and I speak on behalf of the council, by me personally, absolutely arrest that person. Somebody's acting like an idiot to anybody, absolutely arrest them. But we got to also try to work together. And I asked you, Alham, and I said, let's sit down. I'd be willing to sit down. I spoke with the board. I spoke with the religious leader of that mosque. It is not the way it was made out to be. I am sorry. Because the way it was made out to be is 1,000, 1,500 people, maybe 2,000 people, I don't know.
So now it's up to 2,000?
No, 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 no. I'm just throwing a number. I don't know the exact number, but I asked a couple of board members, and they said, absolutely not. It cannot fit no 5,000 people. I don't know the facts. I don't personally, you know, put those numbers together. But they don't all walk out, walk around F-bombing everybody. That is just not the case. So try to work with the residents. Now, tomorrow is Eid, which is a religious holiday, right? So do you want us to put security guards and say, okay, no more than 500 people there? Let me get a little congestion.
No, wait a minute. That had nothing to do with, wait a minute, you're putting apples and oranges.
But the ones with the parking.
I was talking with parking. Because you had the Freedom Festival. You brought up the members and the mosque and all of that. I didn't bring that up. All I said was the parking, so let's stick to the issue.
Okay, so the parking. If somebody's parked, if somebody's parked...
Okay, point of order here, please.
Okay, if somebody's parked, if somebody's parked in front of your house or any house, that is legal.
Okay.
So the police officers or the police department, as you know, can I just walk up and say, okay, you got to get your car out of here because you don't live at that house? But if somebody's parked in front of your driveway, absolutely, that's illegal. And I could speak, I could make a point right now on behalf of the mosque. I'm very comfortable doing that. Absolutely, this is not okay. And if somebody's not going to listen to, listen to a police officer to move their car, then absolutely, the chief and his team got to do what they got to do. But let's try to work together. Again, I asked you, I said, let's sit down after the holiday. Tomorrow might be a crazy day. I, I mean, we're not looking forward to it, obviously. It may end up, but you know what? Let's be good residents. Just work with each other. Until tomorrow's over, because this is too short of a period to try and make such quick plans. After that, I am more than willing, I'm saying it publicly, to sit down with you and anybody else that would like to, including our police department, whoever else. As a matter of fact, they've, the administration's already started working on different plans, try to correct this, you know, have some sort of corrective action. And again, the idiots out there, this is the fifth time I've said it, arrest them, yes. But most people in there are not walking around like idiots.
Can you put a no parking on the right-hand side for tomorrow so we could get in and out of our streets?
You're talking about past Sicil?
You did it to Dax Tater. Get them to Sicil.
So past Dax Tater, you mean?
Tax Tater to Sicil so we can have, so we can get in and out of our residence. And this is what I've been complaining about for almost, I don't know how long.
Chief, just out of curiosity, I don't know if this can be done or not, right now thinking out loud, can, can you put, are you able to put those barriers? Because I know we don't have an ordinance in place right now, but can you put those barriers, at least for tomorrow, being it's a holiday, on, on one side of the street?
On the one side of the streets. It's going to be...
Yellow wood?
Well, the police department can't request them to be put up, but you don't put them up, is...
No, I'm saying, you know, can they be coordinated? So the traffic...
I don't, given the Spirit Festival and everything, is it, is it capable of somebody?
I'm sure we can come up with some temporary no parking.
Okay, we'll try.[1588.83]